Hi, the House. Are we quorummed?
Yes.
Yes, we're quorummed.
Sorry.
Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council work session for November 30th. Welcome, everyone, here and at home. And we're going to start today out. The council had wanted to have some kind of response to the recent decision that resulted in the loss of President LaRiviere from the University of Oregon and wanted to have a -- put a resolution before our council. I'd like to read it, and then Betty will put it on the table for us. A resolution regarding Richard LaRiviere for his service to the University of Oregon and the greater community. The City Council of the City of Eugene finds that Richard LaRiviere has served with enthusiasm and distinction as president of the University of Oregon since July 1st, 2009. President LaRiviere has been a partner, mentor, and friend to individuals across the community and region. President LaRiviere, through his words and actions, demonstrated a deep respect for community values around social equity, economic prosperity, and environmental wealth being. President LaRiviere has been a strong voice for excellence and innovation at the University of Oregon and within our larger community. President LaRiviere -- I'm stumbling, sorry -- has been an enduring presence at community building events, joining with us in the Eugene celebration and other activities, and has worked vigilantly with Eugene's mayor, Kitty Piercy, and the Eugene City Council, neighborhood leaders, University of Oregon students, and business interests to help ensure the livability of our community. President LaRiviere has championed lifelong learning and expanded access to education, leading a collaborative effort with Lain Community College and local school districts to make all institutions equal partners in student access. He has visited classrooms throughout the region to support students at all grade levels and met regularly with colleagues to map resources, identify barriers, and develop support resources. President LaRiviere has made it a prominent part of his administration to be a good neighbor, bolstering the university's accessibility to our community residents. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eugene, a municipal corporation, as follows. We, the Eugene City Council, extend our appreciation to Richard LaRiviere and hereby adopt this resolution, expressing our gratitude for his commitment to the University of Oregon and the greater community. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Andrea?
Just want to make some comments, Mayor, since this is probably the only opportunity that we as a council have an opportunity to share with our community how we feel about this. I'm definitely in a state of mourning. I think President LaRiviere has gone well beyond what was expected of him to encourage inclusive education. He connected with young people. I think he believed in four school districts. There wasn't any second-class citizens when it came to education, in my opinion, from what I could see. In my community, you know, over in the Bethel area, you know, these -- most of the young people there, not to profile or, you know, say that there's a less dedication to education, but it was a hard road for some of those kids to look at going to the university. And in my mind, the young people that I visit with felt more connected and felt like doors were opening up for them. So I -- and I'm really at a loss as to how we're going to continue that -- that road, keeping it open. I think he believes -- I believe in public education, and I think that President LaRiviere did. I think he -- I mean, from what I've seen, I know that he believes in a K through 20 education model, and I'm really -- I'm really sad that he's leaving our community. And if we had power within this council to keep him here, I wish that we would use it. Thank you.
Alan?
Yeah, I too am sad that President LaRiviere is leaving our community. I think he's been a bold leader with a lot of vision. Sometimes that gets you in trouble. And I think he's been good for the community and good for the U of O. Three things in particular for the community that I wanted to point out that I thought were excellent is that his work with the local school districts was unprecedented, in my mind, and work with the president of the university, working directly with the -- with local school districts to bolster education. It was just an amazing thing. He's also bolstered -- put -- it was like night and day between previous administrations and his administration in terms of his involvement in our community. For instance, it was when he was the first one to suggest that the U of O be part of the Eugene celebration. They'd never been part of it before. There was many of those kinds of examples. And then finally, the whole community relations effort that he has bolstered and enhanced and working with the neighborhoods that I represent around the university has just been really spectacular and one of the, I think, the -- hopefully, one of the lasting legacies of this administration is his community involvement and being a good neighbor and working with the neighbors.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. I've been involved in the community for a number of years and seen a lot of events and things that take place that are meaningful, some meaningful to some parts of the community and some meaningful to others. It's the rare event in our community that everybody in the whole community all jumps in together on and enjoys. I think that President LaRiviere was a key part of our celebration of Champions Parade and events. And if there was ever a time where our entire community came together to celebrate something, that was it. There were folks from all over town at that, and they were very proud, and they lined the streets during the parade. And I was especially proud to be from Eugene that day. And I think a lot of that was doing a large part to his administration and his attitudes towards improving relations with the city. And I am very sad to see him go, and I kind of want to say shame on our governor and our chancellor and our board for their bad decision-making.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, last night I was at the Bethel Community Education Forum, and Ben Cannon was down from the governor's office. And it was a pretty broad discussion of education. Not surprisingly, the president came up as a topic of discussion. And overwhelmingly, in the community, he has support and appreciation all the way out to the very edges of the city and beyond. And it saddens me that this turn of events has taken place. And this, I hope and anticipate that the university will be able to rebound, but it's not going to be easy. So I want to personally thank Dr. LaRiviere for his work in Eugene. Hopefully, we will not have heard the last from him.
Well, I know we all want to thank him, and I, when I think about it, I remember when he first came to town and we did the Butte to Butte together. That was one of the first things out the door, and then the Eugene celebration together. And then, of course, as Mike said, the Parade of Champions was wonderful. I'd feel remiss if I didn't say on behalf of -- Alan and I heard last night how much neighbors feel like they had -- were heard and worked with in a different way than they ever had before. So there was a lot of things happening in a lot of places. And I remember watching him with tears in his eyes as he talked about his commitment to inclusive education opportunities for everyone. It was a real priority that he really walked the talk with. So I know whatever he does, he's going to keep on doing these kinds of things, and they'll be important wherever they are. It just happens to be our loss. And I guess I would be -- feel like I needed to say also how much we appreciated the response we got about during the death of Officer Kilcullen as well. All of these are sort of extraordinary ways that we saw each other truly as the City of Eugene feeling that the University of Oregon is part of us and the University of Oregon feeling that Eugene is part of them, and that's been a real wonderful thing for all of us. So with that, moving forward, we'll vote on this resolution. All those in favor? Seven in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Thank you for being here. Our work item to begin today is the Metro Plan Boundary Adjustment Proposal. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll turn it over to Alyssa Hansen.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So the topic of today's work session is a proposal that's been initiated by Lain County to adjust the Metro Plan Boundary. There's a current proposal that's currently in the midst of a formal review process, and that is on the Springfield side. What I'm going to cover today are three things. One, I want to give you kind of a background or a brief overview of the Metro Plan, as well as just some grounding on jurisdictional decision-making within the Metro Plan. Also going to cover the current proposal, which would be to adjust the Metro Plan Boundary on the Springfield side and make it -- actually, remove land and make it coterminous with Springfield's urban growth boundary. And then finally, I will talk about, just give you a brief introduction of the future proposal, which would affect the Eugene side. So just background, the Metro Plan is our region's comprehensive land use plan. So all jurisdictions in Oregon are required to have one of these. We uniquely share ours with Springfield and the metropolitan portions of Lain County. It is, it provides broad land use policy direction. It does that in a number of ways. It covers how our land uses are allocated, where we have residential, where do we have commercial uses, where are the parks located. It talks about, at a high level, talks about preservation of natural resources. It covers our public facilities and services, including wastewater, stormwater, transportation. It also covers other items that are related to statewide planning goals such as energy and air, air quality. And then finally, it also requires coordination, not only because it's been adopted and covers three jurisdictions, but because of, we also have a lot of community partners and agencies that are involved in land use matters. We have a lot of shared public facilities, and some of the other agencies, just to point out, would be schools or other utility providers such as E-Web or Springfield Utility Board. And then finally, the Metro Plan has really been influenced by the region's history of regional planning. We started in 1958 with a regional plan, so to speak, that covered schools, parks, and transportation. It covered Springfield and Eugene. That was followed up in 1972 with our, the region's actually first comprehensive plan. It was called the 1990 Plan at that time. It was really the precursor to the current-day Metro Plan. The Metro Plan, the current Metro Plan was adopted in the early 1980s after, you know, statewide planning goals had gone into effect, and it has been revised several times since then. This map, which is Attachment A in your packet, actually shows the boundaries of the Metro Plan. So all of those lands that are shaded up there, that is the boundary of the Metro Plan. The dark line, let's see if I can find it. This dark line here represents the urban growth boundary. So you can see that it covers all of Eugene, all of Springfield, and then outside that line are the parts of Lain County that are included in the Metro Plan Boundary. The different colors represent the designations or planned uses for those properties, whether they be residential, commercial, parks, you know. And outside the urban growth boundaries, they're predominantly farm and forest lands. Before I jump into the current proposal that's on the Springfield side, I did want to give you kind of a grounding on the current jurisdictional decision-making authority in the Metro Plan. And this is just really key to have a grounding in because it is one of the fundamental reasons that Lain County has initiated this proposal. They are seeking to gain full jurisdictional autonomy on land use matters outside the urban growth boundaries of Eugene and Springfield. So this map is included in your packet as Attachment B, and I'm going to be walking you through Attachment B, just so you have an understanding of who governs what within the Metro Plan Boundaries. So once again, this actually shows the entire Metro Plan Boundary. That's the outside line, and all of the land included here is within the Metro Plan. But there are different layers of government and different layers of review and decision-making. The Metro Plan does provide a review and approval process that's really based on the type of amendment and the location of the amendment. And I'm going to start within the city, and I think just for simplicity, I'm going to use the Eugene side, even though Springfield is actually the current proposal right now for changes, but just since we're all probably a little more familiar with our own lands here. So inside the city, which is, you know, this color, it shows yellow in your handout, that -- so if someone was proposing a diagram amendment to the Metro Plan or specific text, and I think the most recent example would be the Walnut Station amendments that you all approved. They were, in Walnut Station, we were changing one of the land use designations from its former designation to be, you know, commercial mixed use. That would, the decision-making authority for that type of amendment in that location inside our city limits would strictly be Eugene on our side of I-5, and then obviously on the other side of I-5, it would be Springfield. That one's pretty simple. When you get to the next layer, which is kind of these orange areas, those are located outside of the city limits but within the urban growth boundary. So if someone was proposing a site-specific, either a diagram amendment or text amendments, and I, actually, I'll use a current example, so, on the Springfield side, actually. In Glenwood, Springfield is looking at adopting some new standards in that particular area and new designations. That would require that both Lain County and the City of Springfield participate in the decision-making authority. They would be the decision-makers. Eugene would be given an option to participate. We would have to determine if that particular, if the amendment at hand had what's called regional impact. And regional impact is defined in the Metro Plan, and just generally, it would mean, is there going to be, would it require an amendment to one of our jointly adopted plans, such as TRAM's Plan or the Public Facilities Plan, because there would be an impact on levels of urban facilities and services? Would it have a significant impact on our water, stormwater, wastewater, or transportation facilities? And then finally, would it have a significant impact on our buildable lands inventory? Would it take away so much, you know, high-density residential land that that would be problematic? So those circumstances, the City of Eugene, the City Council could actually say that, yes, we think there's regional impact, and yes, we're going to weigh in on this. So the next layer is the green areas, and those are lands that are between the urban growth boundary and the Metro Plan Boundary. So I think the airport's a good example here. So for a site-specific diagram amendment or a site-specific text amendment, say that we wanted to change some of the land uses allowed in the airport, and we needed to do that through a Metro Plan Amendment, Lain County and the City of Eugene would automatically be decision-makers in that, and Springfield would have the opportunity to weigh in if they made a finding that there was regional impact. So for urban growth boundary or Metro Plan Boundary changes, for any of those changes that don't cross the Willamette or the Mackenzie Rivers, or they don't cross over a ridge into a basin, it's the same, kind of the same decision-making. It would be, Lain County would be required to participate. The home city, so either Eugene or Springfield, depending on which side of I-5, and then the other city would have an opportunity to weigh in if they found that there was a regional impact. Kind of the next level would be if there was an urban growth boundary or a Metro Plan Boundary Adjustment that did cross over a river or a ridge, then all three jurisdictions would have to participate. And actually, the current Metro Plan Boundary Adjustment on the Springfield side is exactly that, because the boundary over here would cross a river, now all three jurisdictions are required to participate. Kind of the last category aren't really location-specific, but if there was a non-site-specific text amendment, so say the three bodies wanted to add a policy, I'm going to make this one up, that we want to encourage, you know, green industry in the region, and it's not site-specific, it's not about a certain parcel, then all three jurisdictions need to approve that. And then finally, for amendments that involve a goal exception, such as, you probably recall the I-5 Bridge required an exception to the statewide planning goal regarding Greenway because it required some fill in the Greenway boundaries, you know, along with a bridge, that all three jurisdictions are required to participate in. And so that would be anywhere within the Metro Plan Boundary, whether or not it's inside the urban growth boundary, inside the city limits, all three would need to participate in that. And just really click the flip-over for zoning, because I think there's an understandably so, like I said, the Metro Plan Boundary is, it's really just governs, you know, land use designations, the planned uses. Zoning and development codes, land use codes, those are implemented differently. Those aren't, they implement the Metro Plan, but they're not affected the same way. So for instance, inside the city limits, the city administers the land use code. We, you know, review zone changes, we review the land divisions, conditional use permits, whatnot. In the orange area up there between the city limits and the urban growth boundary, once again, the city administers those, but that code has been jointly adopted by the county and by the city. And then in the green area up there, which is between the urban growth boundary and the Metro Plan, Lain County actually has sole authority for zoning and land use. So if, you know, somebody wants to do a conditional use permit, a land division, a building permit, those go directly to Lain County. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and move on with that. So for the current proposal, Lain County has, earlier this year, initiated a proposal, and they're proposing a two-phase approach. So Phase 1 would be on the Springfield side, and would, Phase 2 would involve the Eugene side. And so the affected lands potentially are those that are shaded on this particular map. So I'm going to zoom into the Springfield side. So what's currently on the table now and has gone through the Planning Commission process and will be coming to you at a joint elected officials' public hearing in early 2012 is removing those shaded areas, which represents about 8,000 acres. It would be removing those lands from the Metro Plan Boundary, snapping the Metro Plan Boundary to Springfield's urban growth boundary. And then these lands would become part of Lain County's rural comprehensive plan. And just thinking back to that jurisdictional decision-making, as a result, Lain County would gain full jurisdictional autonomy on land use matters in those areas, and then Springfield would no longer have any decision-making authority when it came, because it would no longer be in the Metro Plan.
How does Springfield feel about that?
I'll get, I can get to that. Okay. So here, once again, was, I showed you this map previously. This is the current Metro Plan diagram, and this is what it would look like. This is what's proposed to be removed from it. So it's kind of fun to do this, just to see what it looks like. And then moving on, as I mentioned, the planning commissions, the joint planning commissions held public hearings this summer and did deliberate last month. I just wanted to highlight some of the issues that were raised in testimony, and this is just regarding the Springfield side once again. So in terms of support, one of the issues that was raised in support is that it would really reduce the levels of government involvement. If you owned property in that area, you would only have to worry about going to Lain County for any changes to the Metro Plan. So it really would, you know, give Lain County that jurisdictional autonomy. Also, there are a handful of residential properties that they'd actually, if they were no longer in the Metro Plan, if they were transferred to Lain County's rural comprehensive plan, these properties would actually be able to create one or two additional lots on their sites. These properties range, like, they're somewhere between eight and five acres, but they would, because of the limitation in the Metro Plan, they are limited from further dividing, but that same limitation is not in the county's documents. In terms of some of the concerns raised, and I do want to say, you know, on both sides, I'm kind of just highlighting a couple of the key issues here. There was more testimony than these seven bullet points, but I just wanted to give you kind of a flavor of what we heard. One of the issues was about Springfield's ability to protect their drinking water source areas. Much of Subs, Springfield Utility Board, about 40% of their groundwater source and about 90% of their surface waters, 99% of their surface water source actually comes from outside of Springfield's urban growth boundary, and the majority of that falls within the Metro Plan. So currently, if there was a Metro Plan, you know, amendment proposed, Springfield would be able to weigh in. If that land is removed, then Springfield wouldn't, not be able to weigh in, and there were some concerns that their drinking water would no longer be protected. Some of the recommendations were leave those lands in the Metro Plan. There was also recommendation that then, if it was to come out, that Lain County should adopt some drinking water protection standards to help out here. And then thirdly, and actually what Springfield's Planning Commission recommended, is that there be an IGA, an intergovernmental agreement, between Springfield and Lain County about these lands. Another item that was raised was consistency with the Metro Plan text. So in order to amend the Metro Plan, you have to make a finding that it's consistent with the remainder of the Metro Plan, that it doesn't make it inconsistent. And what was brought up in testimony is that only the map is currently being proposed to be amended, and because the text does refer to areas outside the urban growth boundaries, that there is a potential, or that it is inconsistent with the Metro Plan text. Another issue raised is that there would be no benefits to the city, that they would lose the decision-making authority on those areas outside the urban growth boundary. And in Springfield's case, those might be areas where they're looking at for urban growth boundary expansion. Another issue was that it would result in unequal decision-making process on the Eugene side. So if approved, all of those lands would, on the Eugene side, would no longer be part of the Metro Plan, but we would have, you know, on the Eugene side, they would still be part of the Metro Plan. It would still require Eugene and Lain County to participate, and Springfield could still opt in. And then another issue that was raised, kind of as a result of these, that maybe it would make more sense to do a comprehensive approach to changing the Metro Plan. So instead of, you know, surgically changing the map on one side, why not look at it holistically, do both sides at the same time, and that would allow you to change the text as well. On that particular note, so at the Planning Commission deliberations, which were held last month, this is in your agenda item summary, but just a quick review, the Lain County Planning Commission actually voted to not support or not recommend approval of the current proposal on the Springfield side. Springfield ultimately recommended approval under, kind of under a condition that there was, that the drinking water was addressed through an intergovernmental agreement.
Springfield Planning Commission?
Yes, Planning Commission. It's only gone through Planning Commission. Thank you. And the City of Eugene Planning Commission recommended approval as well. So you all will be having a public hearing with the other two bodies, and, you know, we'll have an opportunity to obviously review all the testimony that came in, as well as hear additional testimony. In terms of the future proposal, as I mentioned, Lain County is interested in pursuing a Phase 2 of this, which would impact the Eugene side. The timeline and the scope have not been established. They have acknowledged that it's, given the circumstances on our side, and one of the key issues that's raised is the airport, that it's quite likely that it will look different on our side. It's first going to depend upon where our urban growth boundary is established, and then second, you know, it'll probably take some discussion about where the airport should remain. If the airport remains outside the urban growth boundary, then I think it's likely that we would want to keep that area within the Metro Plan Boundary.
Or we could move here. Again.
So, but I think, you know, the issues that were raised, that are being raised on the Springfield side will just, you know, be important to consider as we move forward. They're likely to be relevant on our side as well as this moves forward. But as I said, it's really going to be dependent on where Eugene establishes an urban growth boundary. So in terms of next steps, kind of repeat here, but the joint elected official public hearing will be scheduled for early 2012, and then after that, there'll be separate deliberations and action for each of the three bodies. And then for the future proposal on the Eugene side, no timeline or scope have been established. That is all I have. Okay, so that's a good, that's a good question. So in order for this to be approved, all three elected officials would have to recommend approval. If one of them does not, or not recommend approval, would actually have to vote to approve it. If one of them votes not to, if one of them votes to deny or not to approve... If one of them votes not to, if one of them votes to deny, or not to approve, then the whole thing does not go forward.
On any portion of it, it's gotta be the whole thing.
It has to be, all three have to vote for approval. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. I've got, I'm gonna, I've got Andrea and Mike and George Polling in the queue. Did you wanna pursue your question?
Can I just clarify a little bit on that? If one of, either Springfield, Eugene, or Lane County, if one of the bodies votes against the proposal, it'll be referred to MPC for the opportunity to try to reach consensus through the MPC process. If that fails, the ultimate result would be the proposal fails.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mike, I think it's your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding of this, Andrea and I, I think it was Andrea and I, that had the chance to serve on the joint elected officials subcommittee on metro plan revisions, and we did a lot of meetings about, and a lot of discussion about whether it was smart to scrap the metro plan and start over again, and how expensive that would be. We kinda came to the conclusion, that's not a good idea. We've talked about it in all our joint elected meetings about how the five kind of surgical areas of fixes to the metro plan need to take place. And my understanding is that the genesis for this was kinda, some of the issues involved in those fixes. It's also a continuation of the county commission's work from previous boards on creating rural reserves. Now, do I have it right that the lands that are currently within the metro plan boundary, but outside the UGB, and could we put up that first slide again, or the second one, either one? My understanding is that, yeah, is that those lands outside there have current planned designations of some nature, and are slated to be developed in some way, and that's the reason they have a designation.
I would say, all lands in the county have a designation, whether they're in the Lane County's rural comprehensive plan, or in-
The reason they're in the metro plan, and the predominance of those, are that they're planned for some use, and as a backstop for where a UGB may expand. Is that correct?
Actually, if we go back to this map, the majority of them are actually designated for agricultural or forest uses, which don't allow intense, you know, commercial or residential developments.
Like I said, my understanding was, their desire was to bring that metro plan boundary in as a part of creating more rural reserves, that would not then be any part of being planned to develop, or not have the potential to develop at some point in the future. Secondarily, I know that this is an issue because of the things that I've done in the Santa Clara area, along with Andrea. There's a, there's a lot of questions around governance issues, that we've had challenges with those residents, with the county on the 190 and 195 agreements. My understanding, too, is then, is one of the issues is, right now, the council has the capacity to veto, and the City of Eugene has the capacity to do, have say over what rural residents who don't live inside the city have to contend with. And the issue for them is that they don't get any voice in electing their representatives to this council, but are subject to the rules that we make. And I think that's a legitimate issue that we should take into consideration when we think about this. Also, can you help me understand the Measure 49 implications of any of those rural residents, of the, that difference between the metro plan and the urban growth boundary? How does their rights granted under Measure 49 to develop, how are they hindered by how the process exists right now?
I'm gonna pass that one over to Emily. But one point, just one point of clarification, for those lands that are outside the urban growth boundary, but within the metro plan boundary, it is no easier or no more difficult to bring those into the urban growth boundary than it is other lands. So for instance, I just, and I'm pointing to these not because that's, just because they're so, this, ah, hold on. Trying to make my point. This area right here is not within the metro plan boundary, and nor is this particular area down here.
I see. What we're considering for-
Right, which are areas that we are required by state law to, as you recall from a couple weeks ago, to look at for potential urban growth boundary expansion. So, just because those other lands are inside the urban growth boundary, it doesn't make them any more or less likely to be part of an expansion, or for development to be intensified there. So, but I'll turn the 49 question over to Emily.
We don't think there are any Measure 49 issues for them in their current status as being between the UGB and the metro plan boundary, and we don't think this change would affect that status either.
Let me clarify, my question was around, Measure 49 gave them the capacity to do things, instead of the Measure 37 route. And they're not, you mentioned the capacity to split for five acre parcels, or whatever it is, so that's not impacted one way or another?
It's not a Measure 49 issue. Oddly enough, the issue, there's a few property owners who have brought their concerns forward, and had a major impetus, I think, in bringing this issue to your group, and to the board particularly. They're agricultural properties, rural property owners?
They're rural residential, are those?
Rural residential owners, okay. And they are in that area, outside the urban growth boundary, inside the metro plan. And under the metro plan, the minimum lot size for them is five acres.
Okay.
In the rural comprehensive plan, so where they're not in the metro plan, they act, the county actually lets them divide into smaller parcels. So if you have an eight acre parcel, and you are located in the white area, completely outside of our metro plan, you can divide into.
You can make two portions, yeah.
If you are actually closer in, and you're within the metro plan boundary, and you have an eight acre parcel, you can't divide.
You wanna be in the next round?
You divide that in three.
You can be more urban if you're outside the metro plan boundary.
Well, there's a conundrum. George Polling.
I, I've got a question in reference to the last paragraph in the agenda item summary. It talks about the evidence being submitted. Does this fall under the quasi-judicial status at this point?
No.
Okay. Because we have received some emails in reference to people's opinion as to what we should do with this.
I do want you to be careful, though, because the metro plan process actually tells you that you cannot accept new evidence at this point, that you can only look at what the Planning Commission had. You do have a mechanism for opening the record and allowing new evidence, but we want Springfield, Eugene, and Lane County to handle it the same way. I've reached out to county staff, they're the proposers here, to ask them how they wanna handle that, and we don't yet know if we're gonna ask you to pass a motion to allow new evidence. So, please be kind of guarded about looking at any new evidence at this point.
I will say that the information that you received from me and Nelson, that's already in the record. Those two attachments are in the record, the Planning Commission record.
Okay, very good. And speaking of the Planning Commissions, I realize that this is in the early stages, and I appreciate the work that's been done so far. But I was kinda hoping to get a little bit more information as to the discussions and the reasoning behind the decisions made by the different Planning Commissions, whether it be a snapshot, condensed version, or the minutes, or something, but, you know, just to, in the AIS, it says that the planning, this Planning Commission voted this way. It doesn't say why, it doesn't give the pros and cons. So, if we could get that before the-
Absolutely.
-officials meeting, it's probably gonna be quite thick. So if we get it well ahead of time, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of questions surrounding the area that's outside of the metro plan area that we are required by state rule to consider first for expansion of the urban growth boundary. Just a refresher on, where did that state rule originate?
So, where did it originate? I don't know its history, but it is part of the statutes that require that if we're needing to expand the urban growth boundary, that we have to look at those lands. Our first priority of lands to look at are those that are residential, that are located just outside our urban growth boundary.
I'm sorry, I wasn't asking you actually the history of the rule itself, but where, the decision that those were the lands that fell under the rule?
Oh, okay. It's based on their designation, both in the metro plan and in Lane County's rural comprehensive plan. So the jurisdictions, Lane County determined that those lands should be considered residential, and it was predominantly based on how they were developed.
So, and to take it up kind of a lot higher level, one of the main tenants in Oregon land use law is preserving the rural and the agriculture and the forested areas for those uses. And so, when, but yet accommodating the growth that we're gonna see, and trying to accommodate the growth, the urban growth within these urban areas. So that when we actually have to accommodate more people, and it requires us to move our boundaries out, those priorities are based on that basic tenant, that we are going to go into the highest value farmlands and highest value forest land as last resort. First resort is the stuff that is already developed, you know, four acre parcels that already have houses on them are where we should be going before we go into really high-value rural lands. So that's sort of where it comes from.
So the answer that I'm looking for, really, is maybe one that you can't answer sitting at the table right here, and that is, which jurisdiction originally decided that that specifically was the land that would fall under that rule?
Well, in the rural comprehensive plan, it would be Lane County.
The county, the county board of commissioners?
The county, correct, correct. So they adopted their rural comprehensive plan. For the metro plan, I, it was adopted by, you know, that map there was adopted by all three jurisdictions.
But the white area that's outside of the UGB, outside of the urban metro plan, but it's, has to be by rule considered first, was decided by the Lane County Board of Commissioners?
Correct.
Any timeframe, how long ago that was?
No idea. I mean, it was probably, I'm gonna guess, after 1972, because that was when statewide planning went into effect, but probably in the 80s as well.
But then, a lot of the way we look at land has changed since that decision was made. So, for instance, wetlands have been redefined over and over again since then. Forest lands have certainly been redefined, re-designated since then. So, the jurisdiction that made that decision was not making that decision based on the same set of ideas and ideals that we look at today when we're making land use decisions. Is that a fair statement?
I'm gonna guess probably that's correct. I will say that we get to look at those things now, though, you know, and we're kinda getting off track with the expansion, but we are able to look at a number of issues, including natural resources, when we're considering, we're not, you know-
It is right on track for me, because I'm trying to determine why we're looking at these lands in particular, when they are outside of the metro plan area, and they are outside of the UGB.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Betty, you're next.
Oh, thank you. Do you have the date for the JEO hearing?
No, I don't think that's yet been scheduled.
It has not been scheduled, that's correct.
Thank you. And I, like George already asked, but I was going to ask, could we see the deliberations of the Planning Commission?
Absolutely.
I would like to not only know what the Planning Commission said, but what individuals said about it.
Absolutely. I mean, the minutes will come forward with that information, so.
And so, are you saying in response to Pat, that the county commission could change their land designations if they established it? You didn't say that, but could they?
Just as we, the City of Eugene, could also, you know, any of the lands within the metro plan, it requires a plan amendment, actually, to change those designations.
Could they change it by themselves, I mean, the county commission?
They'd have to go through a public process, but correct, they could be changed.
Which would include us, right?
If it's outside of the metro plan boundary, it would not include us. If it's inside the metro plan boundary on our side, it would include us.
To be clear, though-
They could review them, certainly.
...as essentially like a citizen would, so the testimony, and in the areas, right now, I would guess that if Lane County decided to consider changing the designation of some of the lands that we're looking closely at for our urban growth boundary project, we would be involved. We would make ourselves involved.
Okay, well, I think we have a great interest in the agricultural land and the forest land outside the city. And that's all, thank you.
George, and then Ellen.
Thank you. Yeah, I, too, would like to see the minutes, and I guess we're gonna do that, that's great. Thank you. I'd also like to see any arguments from the county. I haven't seen anything on our emails or any detailed proposals why, you know, they wanna do this. And hopefully, somewhere within all that testimony and the county, will be an explanation of why two cities, the most populous area in Lane County, will give up decision-making authority on land that directly abuts their license, and why we wanna step away from regional planning, and why we would wanna have the decision-making authority shrink from 19 people in the city councils, and the county down to far, just the five county commissioners. So I'm, I look forward to that. I want to see some good arguments, why we should just voluntarily give up any decision-making powers over this big area of land that is, you know, directly abutting us. And my other question, that I hope this can answer, what do the cities get out of this? What do we get out of it? Why should we voluntarily give up our decision-making authority? And I look forward to that.
Okay. And if you were looking for some required, or some, you know, reading over the holidays, Lane County does have a website that has all of the staff reports from the Planning Commission proceedings.
On the Georgia, then you don't have to-
Right, and so that will, you'll actually be, I think, getting most of that, or all of that. You will be getting everything as part of the Planning Commission proceedings will be given to you as well, but if you wanted to do-
Before the JEO.
Yes, absolutely. But if you wanna read ahead, it's out there.
And the Planning Commission meetings from Eugene are actually webcast as well now, so.
I don't think those were, because they were at the county.
Oh, sorry, the joint ones.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good try, though.
Ellen.
So, what was, what's the original rationale for a metro plan boundary?
You know, we have been looking for that, and it's not like one sentence that says why.
What's the theory?
Well, there are a lot of things that you wanna go to, that, you know, initially, I think all of us thought, oh, well, a long time ago, there were urban reserves. Maybe were the areas where you would go to first if you expanded. And so we thought we would just find that the urban reserve lines would match up with the metro plan boundary, and maybe when urban reserves went away, we just kept that. But it's not that, boundaries are different. There's urban, like a facilities area where we would look at providing facilities, and it's actually not clear. The county's proposing this, and we've relied largely on the county to provide lead on answering questions like that, and I believe the county planning director provided his best response to that question, but in all honesty, I'm not completely clear on it, and our staff have dug, and it's clearly an attempt to ensure some regional planning. I mean, there's no question about that. But how precisely this boundary was selected, or what the derivation of the particular, you know, divots and dots are, we don't know.
Right. My theory is that it was, those areas were obviously adjacent to our current urban growth boundary, and eventually would be part of the urban area, and therefore, the City of Eugene had an interest in how they got developed, and the City of Springfield has an interest in how they would be developed. And that's why we have a metro plan boundary, which is those areas that where we have interest that for future expansion and development, we all should agree in what happens. So, I'm a little unclear why the county commissioners think it's a good idea for us to give up our authority over that potentially urbanizable lands, or agricultural lands, as Commissioner Taylor was, or Councilor Taylor was talking about. And so, when the urban growth boundary changes, and it were to go outside the current metro plan boundary, does that change the metro plan boundary automatically? Do you have the backing to change the metro plan?
It'd probably happen concurrently, but it would require an amendment to the metro plan.
That would be administrative issue, okay.
It would probably come forward with the same package, yeah.
Okay. I'm too interested in the Planning Commission votes. If I got this right, the Lane County Planning Commission voted this down, seven to two, which is not even close. So, and City of Springfield voted four to two, but they have this issue about their wells in the water, and our Planning Commission voted three to two to approve it. Can you guys feel comfortable just giving a little synopsis of where they were coming from on this?
Do you remember?
Especially the Lane County.
Wait, because we advised it first.
Because I don't wanna get a too-its-thick minutes of seventeen minutes.
They're actually not that thick. I mean, I didn't, no, I, you know, off the top of my head, I cannot remember.
There you go. And we are sort of five minutes into the time for our parking discussion, so I'm gonna wanna-
One more question. So, the airport, when we were doing the transportation funding subcommittee, we ran into several problems with our jurisdiction over the airport, and what we could do and not do there, because it was not within our urban growth boundary. And so when we do the urban growth boundary adjustments, are we gonna look at incorporating the airport in the UGB?
That issue has been raised, and I mean-
Look at bumping right up against, adjacent to it, right?
Right, so that issue has been raised, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's been raised. I don't know where it stands at this point. I think we were looking at, you know, what do we have to gain from that, what do we have to lose from that, and does it, does it make sense, or is it better off outside of the, you know, urban growth boundary?
Yeah, I was trying to think of why it would be better off outside the UGB. I couldn't come up with any answer, but I could come up with a lot about why it was good to have it inside the UGB.
That makes no difference, because it's already developed, it's already at the airport.
So when we do, when we go through Envision Eugene, I'd like to see that incorporated into that process.
We need to move on. I have Mike and Pat in the queue, and I want to cut you off, but I do want to add...
Too quick, just too quick.
Yeah, very brisk.
One, how many people, I'd like in a memo if you could, or just a note, how many people are, live within that no man's land between the UGB and the metro plan boundary? How many rural residents are affected?
For the current proposal?
How many currently live within that area?
On the, with the current proposal, on the Springfield side?
Springfield side?
Or both?
Both Eugene and Springfield. And how many are county but inside the UGB, to the best of your knowledge? You can put that in the memo. Secondly, the county planning commission, I don't know when this was heard by them, but is the construction of the planning, county planning commission, what percentage is still appointed by the previous board as opposed to appointed by this board, do you know?
No idea.
Okay. I'd like to know that, too, if you can, if it's findable.
Okay, Pat?
No questions, just a statement. I really have questions regarding the validity of the metro plan and its boundary, based upon the facts that land use has changed significantly since it was set up. And we're looking at lands that are outside of the metro plan and outside of the urban growth boundary, completely in the county's jurisdiction for our own urban growth boundary expansion. So it seems to me that the rules and regulations and actually the entire validity of the plan is in question right now. And I think that's the question that we have to deal with as a city, as Springfield has to deal with as a city, and the county has to also. Thank you.
All right. First round on this discussion, and we'll, thank you very much, and we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Thank you very much.
How much we love parking.
We're gonna talk parking now. Private parking lot operators' fines and practices.
I have a suggestion.
Stop it.
Make it all free. You actually brought Parking Professionals magazine. Just to prove that...
Dedicated man.
You're out for it at one meeting, so...
Dedicated man.
Hey now.
Right in the center, yeah.
I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Brand-new automated meters in the middle.
That would be just fine.
Thanks, John.
I think we should bring that up louder.
Our respect and undying...
Seems like every time I meet with you, it's kind of a rowdy group here, so it's a fun group, so...
Sure they are.
So in the past, you've asked me to come talk to you about public parking systems. Today, you've asked me to talk about the private side of the parking industry and address some specific questions. I don't have a PowerPoint, just gonna tell a story, talk a conversation. So, but I do want you to, I do ask a question, that you visualize your favorite parking lot, and I know you each have one, but it could be Turtles, could be Steelhead Brewery, could be the US Bank Building Parking Lot, you know, there's various forms here. Some have small lots, some have big lots, some are co-existent to a building, and some are dedicated strictly to parking. The, these lots, privately owned lots, the owners have a right to allow or not allow parking or certain types of activity on those parking lots. The, if they do allow customer parking, it could be a reserved space for a tenant in an apartment complex, could be a 7-Eleven on campus that really is trying to keep students from parking there and trying to get their customers in there. They have some rights to exclude or to allow, and if they allow, they can impact some conditions that might be there. You know, the conditions that you might hear about is, like, the Fifth Street Public Market allows three-hour parking on-site. Other places have paid parking in their lots, they may, and then if you do have a paid parking lot or a time-limit lot, the question is, how do you make sure people follow those policies set forth? Some parking lot owners, such as a Fifth Street Market, Peace Health, they have their own private, I say private, they have their own in-house parking staff, and they actually write their own citations. The Fifth Street Market has a in-house business called Northwest Parking Services that issues a $50 parking ticket if you exceed their three-hour parking there. Peace Health has staff on-site that kind of goes around their six garages and issues citations there also. Other people don't want to be in the business of parking, and they hire companies to do that. And the biggest company in our town is Diamond Parking. But there's also Republic Parking, who manages the city of Eugene's airport parking lots. And then the city of Eugene actually does a little bit of private lot enforcement at the business's request. The, in terms of the hiring a private company to take over your parking management services, essentially, there's gonna be some fee involved. The user relationship between the property owner, and there may be a commercial business located within that property, and then there's a parking company here. So the property owner has a contract with their leaseholder and the business there, and they make revenue off of that, hopefully. And then the parking, parking spots is an economic opportunity that the private sector uses to make money. So they do make money that way, and sometimes the business and the parking operating company don't always see eye to eye, but they are hired by the same business manager or property owner in that case. The, you know, the questions that were posed there were around Diamond Parking and companies that issue tickets. There's also numerous cases out there where there is sharing of parking, and there is cohabitation between businesses, residential. The one that comes to my mind is a very little theater down by the YMCA. There's a, I think it's a dental office complex between the Y and the very little theater. And they have, it might just be a handshake agreement that says, during the daytime, when the theater's not operational, let our employees park in your parking lot, and when you have a production going on, we'll let your employees and patrons park in our parking lot. I like to think that's the more common one across the entire city of Eugene, but when you get in places where parking is a little more scarce, you get into more of the managed parking systems out there. The, I'll just jump right into some of the questions that were posed in the work session item here. I'll read the question here and just give you a little response and more background on it. So one of the questions is, can the city regulate or restrict, I assume it's parking fines charged for nonprofit, charge for profit companies? The owner of a parking lot has a right to exclude. They are required to put up proper signage, to write that citation. But the one thing we want to make clear is that it's not really a citation. It's not, a citation is something written to Eugene City Code. That's what, we write that in some ways. A private parking operator writes a bill for service or invoice for using our service but not actually paying for it, and there's a late fee attached to it. You can think of it that way. One example is the city of Portland, they do regulate the private parking industry. And what's unique in the city of Portland is actually, it was the private parking operators, and there's one big one there, City Parking, that came to the city and said, we don't have any way to write a citation, and our only way to collect payment fees from people is either to tow them or boot them, and we don't like doing that. So they actually, in the eighties, worked with city staff in Portland to come up with city code that allowed them to write parking citations. And part of that city code that they mutually agreed upon set the time limit rate equal to what the city of Portland charges on-street, and I want to say it's $36 is what their on-street violation is, or maybe it's $46 now. They also have to register, it's a business license fee, so every parking lot, one space, a thousand spaces, pays a $200 annual fee. And then any citation that is issued on that lot that a customer or a person in the public doesn't like, they can actually appeal that and have that adjudicated by the city of Portland. There's about, city of Portland has, sorry, about 170 lots that are registered through their business license. They collect $200 each on that, so about $30,000 a year, and they adjudicate about three or 400 tickets a year. So that's one model that is out there that the city could explore. Second question is, could the city restrict towing companies to act only when the business is open? Working with our city attorney's office, we think it's highly unlikely that that could happen, it'd probably be challenged, but there is some city code that, and the states come out with some new code a year or two ago, they actually try to target predatory towing practices. And some of the new code gives the vehicle owner, the RO, registered owner, some more rights, that when that car is being hooked up, that if you show up and that's your car, they gotta drop it. They have to take some photos, and the property manager has to be on-site to make sure to have that towed. So the state actually, and we followed, we implemented the same thing, we adopted it, that try to protect against some of the predatory towing. Some of the challenges is that if you don't have a parking management company to issue parking invoices, tickets, your only other option as a private property owner is to post the proper signs per the sign code and tow that vehicle off your lot. So it's kind of, that's a very harsh scenario, but that's, you see that all over our community, that towing companies have their signs posted for customer or tenant use only. Isn't the city's interest to have unused lots available to possible customers and nearby businesses? In terms of land use efficiencies, we think it's an interest, but we feel that's a policy discussion, that we look for direction from council on that. And the question four is, do the businesses that own parking lots get a share of Diamond's fines for use of the property towing rights? I don't know. I don't, they're private contracts, they're between Diamond and the private property owners. I can speak to what the city of Eugene has. We have a lot, 901 Franklin, we refer to as a Ruth property lot. It's an odd triangle lot that, if you think of a rectangle, it's actually sliced diagonally through there, so it's more efficient to have one person, one company operate it, and Diamond writes citations on there. The city does not get a share of the parking, the citation revenue. What happens is Diamond reimburses us for the $5 all-day parking fee, and I assume, and they keep the rest of it. So they reimburse us for the lost parking space revenue, and they keep the citation fee. Usually, there's some type of revenue-sharing agreement, 70-30, 60-40 net of expenses, that the, that the city or a private company would have. Lane County, Diamond Parking manages a Lane County parking system. There are lots and permits for employees. And they have, similar to what we have in the airport parking, which is, you have a parking management company in there, and you get a percentage of the revenue, and I think it's around 13 or 14 percent. So of every, you know, $100 a permit sold by Diamond, and they retain $13 of that, and all the rest of the revenue goes to the county. The city's contract with Diamond Parking, which is to manage our permit sales and to staff two garages, is a flat $13, $14 an hour fee. So every penny that's generated by a city parking program comes to the city, and we pay them $13 an hour to manage our lots. That's my story. So I'm here for questions, and answer anything I can help.
Andrea?
Well, I just kind of, thank you for the presentation and for putting up with us. I don't know how else to put it.
Do you say that to everybody?
Just about. No, just Jeff, because I think we give him definitely a run for his money. So, so I'm not, you know, I think that, you know, what you stated was all within code, but I think one of the predatory things that my constituents have had trouble with was a scenario I'm gonna have to give you, because I don't know how else to do it. So they've gotten tickets at Lot A, and then they're in Lot D within the hours, you know, the time's not gone over, they're in there within the time that they're allowed to be in there, and they come back and their car's gone. Because basically, what the tow truck drivers have done, because they manage both lots, is they go through and they run the license plate numbers of all the cars in the lot until they basically hit one that has outstanding citations or tickets or whatever, and then they tow it. And I don't know how to address that. I mean, and that's what they've done. I mean, they've not gone over the time limit in Parking Lot D, they may have some outstanding tickets in Parking Lot A, but, you know, that to me is just really challenging.
From a previous time?
Yeah, from a previous time. And actually, I had that happen to a young lady who I was with, and we thought her car had gotten stolen, because we were in the, you know, in the parking lot within the right amount of time, and so we came down to city hall to file a report, and then they just said, oh no, your car got towed for outstanding tickets. And that's the kind of scenario that is just amazing to me.
Is this a city lot or a Diamond, or, sorry, a private parking lot?
It was a private parking lot.
Okay. So the only thing I can, I did ask, I talked to Diamond Parking staff, they use the words "they currently do not tow." And they, and I don't know what the word "currently" means, but they are not in the active business of towing, and from the private parking side, I hate towing also. It's a last resort. So I don't know when that practice, you know, when this incident occurred, and when they changed their internal policies, but it wasn't like yesterday they changed their policies, it's been a while.
Well, it's been since last summer, I think, but still, I mean, that's really concerning, you know, to people who are, you know, just totally here to underway. Was I done talking?
She just didn't start. You have unlimited time.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
First of all, Jeff, I really appreciate the extra effort that you've made to deal with some problems that are around on-street parking, with some business owners that have called me for some advice and help. And I wanted to say it in front of the manager, that, you know, Jeff came out, worked with the owners, did everything he could to try and solve the challenges that they were having on-site, and I really appreciate that very much. But I do hear from a number of folks, especially business owners in the downtown area, whose employees use a lot of Diamond lots in the area, about their inconsistent enforcement practices. In other words, they'll, you know, they'll tow, or, excuse me, they'll cite things that are in advance of when the time actually runs out by, not five minutes, but by a good margin of time. They'll fight it, and they'll, you know, eventually let them go and not have to pay it, because they can prove it. But is there any way that we can get into the, into the process of regulating how the private lots enforcement parameters are set up, so that we don't, you know, the level of fines, for example, like you mentioned, the $50 fine. Can we set boundaries around what those folks can, the amount they can find, the practices on when they can send a bill, as it were?
I'm gonna ask ours attorney to...
We probably could. But, you know...
For the sake of consistency, shouldn't everybody administer their parking in at least a similar way, so that residents know what to expect?
Right. You know, what comes to mind for me is our regulation of garbage, solid waste program. You have, you probably have the authority to do that. It's not a small deal, but yeah, you probably have the authority to do that.
Well, I've messed with parking before, so, thank you.
Okay, I've got George Pulling, then George Brown, and then Ellen and Betty.
I was just trying to get your attention.
Oh, well, you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was struck by the agreements that the city of Portland worked out.
So the parking lot owners or their managers don't charge more than the city charges for a violation on-street. Did I read that right?
That's, that's, that was, that's my understanding, and the code that they wrote was strictly to be able to write a citation versus a, you know, a bill for services.
And the whole thing started with the parking lot company wanting to be able, so they were happy to court, to work with the city to, so they could have...
That's correct.
Well, I, I don't know, we might want to look at that. I mean, I don't know how far we want to take this, but the city charges $16 for a parking violation on the street, and the parking lot owners or the managers are charging anywhere from $30 to $50 for the same, same violation.
Yes and no. Yes and no. So the, so let's think about, there's two different types of categories here. There's a time-limit violation, which is mostly two-hour zones, and meter violations, those are $16. I don't know, failure to pay, that's how the city usually writes in a parking lot, it's a time-limit violation, your times run out. The city actually writes a, we have a dozen private lot contracts, and we tie it to a city code that's a tow-away private lot code, and our citation value is $40 in that case. And so there's kind of a, kind of a category of time-limit violations and violation of lot rules. So, and so we're kind of right in the middle between the $30 and the $50 citations that are out there.
Do you know what the total range is, say, like, from Diamond to the city, and then to the public market? We refer to the city, and I think public market's $50, I believe?
Yeah, I have a copy of their citation. Diamond is a $30, so it's, it's 30.
$30, okay.
Yeah, they, you know, different, so there's that, the Eugene City Code has 40, 50 types of different parking violations in there, and we tie a fine, or, you know, our presiding judge ties a fine amount, level two of those. You know, I bet, I would guess that Diamond has a lot less than that, they probably have 10 or 8, so a lot less direction in there. I assume the history, public market has one, and it's a $50 citation, and if you pay within 30 days, it's reduced to 25.
I know that some of- Okay, thank you. I know that some of the complaints that we've read about in our emails involved, the complainant claimed they were improper signing, and that they didn't, you know, it was late at night and they were going to the hall center, they were going somewhere else. The city's lot was full, so they parked in a-
Private.
-publicly-run parking lot and didn't see the signs. And most of the ones I've seen around downtown are signed pretty well, so I'm wondering if the city has any oversight role to investigate a complaint like that and go to the site and say, "Oh yeah, they're right. They were right." It is confusing, or it is misleading, probably not on purpose, but-
I think it's sort of land use, I mean, it becomes a private property land use enforcement question, so I believe that's where those complaints would land. You know, not, they don't come to me from the parking site.
I see.
I mean, they come to me. You send them to me.
That's right.
You're the parking professional.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Alan, and then Betty.
All kidding aside, I think everybody in the council, myself especially, think you do a great job parking, and you've taken it to new places that we never thought we'd see, like for instance, the, in the neighborhoods around the arena, in the J District, they now have that license plate recognition, so the meter person just rides around and it automatically figures it out for us, and looks at the tire and its tire stem and all this. Very high-tech. So, and who thought parking would get high-tech? So I'm also intrigued by the city of Portland and the way that they do it. Is that, so they have all those parking lots, and they pay 200 bucks, but then the whole thing kind of, the administration of the fines is done by the city?
Mm-hmm.
And, but all the fines are exactly the same?
The adjudication of the fines.
Adjudication of the fines.
Yeah, they don't-
And all the fines are the same?
Schedule.
The schedule.
Schedule, yes.
Right. And we have how many parking violations?
A lot.
Forty, you said? Why do we have-
I think 42.
You have so many. I mean, do you violate parking or you don't?
Well, it varies. I mean, they probably don't write yellow zones. They don't write parking in the middle of the road. They don't mark, you know, there's, we're tied to the transportation system, and so the, there's a little few more that deals with the public right-of-way.
And the fire agents, all those different places.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I can see where we get them. So they're all just a little specific circumstances.
Leaving your keys ignition is a fine, I guess, and letting your car running by a present, so.
It is?
Yeah, yeah. We don't write it.
So, so could we get back to us this, the schedule of fines? Because it's a little disconcerting to me that some of them are so much higher than the city's. So if we could get, if you could kind of get a-
City of Eugene?
Yeah, city of Eugene versus the private lots in comparison.
I, yes. I mean, I can provide the city of Eugene fine schedules on our municipal court website. I can, I can get that.
Well, I won't, I don't, I know what that is, because I've gotten my share of parking tickets, but I mean, comparison to the private prices. What I'm getting at is some of them seem to be two times, maybe three times higher than what we're charging, and that seems unreasonable. And, which is also why I'm intrigued by the Portland model.
So city of Eugene fines relative to what I know, can find out here in our community on the private side?
Yeah, right. Right. If we're seeing substantially higher fines without justification, that makes the Portland model seem that much more appealing.
Betty, are you done?
Can we also get some more information about the Portland model? Do you have any more than this paragraph?
I mean, I, they have a nice webpage that talks about it, and they link their code to it, so it's, you know, it's fairly easy for me to transcribe that to you, so.
Just send us the link.
Or the link, that would be great. Yep.
Okay, Betty.
Okay. How do these private people get the right to write tickets? I said, no, you said they're citations, but do we give them the right? They not only charge money, but then they harass people.
Well, you have to think about it as, say it's your home, or if you had a home, you know, you owned a business, it's a private property right, and you could say, "No one can ever park on my property."
No, well, I was just thinking of that. If someone parked in my driveway, could I go out and give them a $50 ticket and then harass them every week?
It's essentially a contract, right? I mean, they put up, they have signage, and if you want to go park on their property, and they're going to allow you to, there may be terms and conditions to that. And, you know, essentially by you choosing to park on that private property, you're accepting the terms of they're allowing you to do so. So, you know, like Jeff said, when he says that you get a ticket or a citation from one of these private property owners or their company, it's not really that. They're billing you according to the terms that you agreed to by parking there. And if you don't pay, you know, fair enforcement options, they can't send you to court, but they could go to small, they could take you to small claims court. They could potentially use a collection agency. But they're private property rights, and that's the reason why we also don't have the ability necessarily to force somebody to allow parking on their, what may seem to be a very, a great place for people to park after hours. If they don't want to let people park there, we really don't have the ability to make them do so.
It seems to me that we should protect people from persecution, however. That is, I know people have had their cars towed, as Envy already said. One time it was a man who was ill for several days and didn't move his car for 24, you're supposed to move your car every 24 hours. And then you have to pay a huge fee to get the car back, and some people can't afford that. Well, one example I'm thinking of is across from Turtles, the business closed, and there was no, there were no signs there at that time. Someone parked and then got this citation from Diamond, I think it was. And how do they get, how do they defend themselves then if they're getting harassed by collection agencies and by-
They, presumably they're getting some kind of letter and correspondence from Diamond, who that private property owner hired to do that business for them. And, you know, it may be a small claims court, it may be, they have, they're basically two private parties dealing with a property dispute at that point. So they deal with it as if your neighbor was encroaching on your property.
It's no different than any other business transaction, though. If you go to the, if you order something online with the agreement to pay, and you choose not to pay, and you receive the item, the business may choose to try to collect that, and they can go through a collection agency, and they can do whatever else. And so it's, it's really no different than any other business transaction. You're buying the right to park, and in exchange for that right to park on that private property, you've agreed to pay something or agreed to only stay for so long. And if that contract isn't fulfilled, then they, they can collect on their side of the contract. Is that right?
Yeah, you know, one of the things that Jeff thinks on is the AS, is that there are things we could potentially do to encourage that property owner who's clearly not using their lot to enter into some sort of agreement with Turtles. Maybe we could try to facilitate that or provide some incentives for those sorts of arrangements, but essentially, it really is that individual can say, "No, I don't want anyone parking on my property."
I think they have a sign now, but I don't think they did before. So that's a different matter. I know that, it's a long time ago, but I've gotten bills from, I've never gotten, I've gotten one parking ticket in my life, it's so long ago, it was $1. But, it was, but, I did get-
Where did you park your horse?
That was in another city, and I was talking to somebody. Anyway, it was $1, and I paid it.
Essentially free.
Can we have a moment of silence? A moment of respect or something?
Really, she's over here.
I have, a long time ago, before I was on council, I parked at the train station and gone out of town, and I left money, and then I get a bill saying I didn't leave money. And by talking to them, I was able to get them to say, "Okay, we got, we, it's okay." But if I hadn't had the free time during their office hours, I had to make a number of calls before I could get through. And it's just, it just isn't right that you should get a ticket for something like that. And it doesn't seem right to me that people, private parties should be able to give tickets. As I said, it would be ludicrous if somebody parked in front of my driveway and I went out and gave them a bill. I might feel like it, but I don't think I could enforce it. And I think, I would like to see some options of what we can do to protect people from towing and from, from being harassed by parking lot operators.
Portland model.
And the towing case I've told about was a person who was ill and was not, was probably developmentally disabled also. And he lost his car because it was a cheap car and he couldn't afford the, and his father had to come down from another city and buy him another car, which he needed to get to work. But it was all because he was ill and couldn't move his car. And it was a towing company. And I hope that's no longer happening. But I also know of a case where a person got her car towed because she'd been in a hit-and-run accident, and, and her wedding dress was locked in the car, and she barely got it back in time, because the towing company wouldn't give it back without a lot of money. So I'd like to see some options for doing something about towing and about predatory towing and about abuses by parking lot owners, and I know my time's up. Thank you.
Yep. So just to follow up on that, the issue that we have with staff is if it takes a small amount of time to give you information, they're more than willing to do that. If it's pursuing something larger, then there has to be enough interest on this body for them to spend the time doing that. Otherwise, we're asking them to spend valuable time and resources in pursuing something that you actually don't have interest in. So if there, I heard at least a couple of you say that you want to follow up on the Portland model, and I think that seems to be fairly easy, because you can just get a link and take a look at it, and if you decide to pursue it, then you can do a work session and we can, can follow that. Is there anything else that you want staff to do that there's enough interest in that we're giving them that direction? And that's what we need, because I think Betty's bringing up, she wants a pursuit of towing policies, and so that would be some substantial time, and so we need to know if the body wants to, if there's enough interest in that to pursue that. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you in the queue, Mike? I don't think so.
Yeah, I thought so, but I-
Were you? Well, anyway, let Andrea and I-
Okay.
Just be a minute. So I'm interested in looking at the Portland policy. I think I can, I can do that on my own, but I would like to see standardization of how parking is dealt with in the community. I mean, that's kind of what my ultimate goal would be. It does sound like there's a variance in cost, but I definitely want the parking companies to be a partner in this. I, you know, don't want, I want them to be, I can't make people feel any certain way, but I would, I would hope that they'd be willing to sit down with us and talk to us and find something reasonable to make it, you know, and if helping them, making it more palatable for them would be allowing them to write citations so that they, maybe we could use, I don't know if that would increase our court costs or what, but I mean, that's the kind of thing I'd like to see us go in that direction, because I do think that there's some value in standardization of everything that we do, and especially if there's multiple providers of the service, which is what we have here. I think we should have some, you know, standardized way of looking at things. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Andrea hit on what I was saying before. I will, I would like very much to see that link as well to the Portland site, but mine, I guess what I would ask for, and if, to sum up what Andrea was saying here, and kind of tie off on it previously, my concern is with the amounts and whether or not we have, what would be the scope of work to limit the amounts to some standardized number? And specifically, what would be the scope of work for us to put in place some manner of ensuring that the private lots enforcement was done in a fair and even-handed way? That they weren't, they weren't, they weren't overburdening someone to prove their innocence of something? Does that make sense? I mean, if they come out a, you know, half hour early and write them a bill, their only recourse is to go to court. So is there any way that we can put in some manner of capacity to intervene? What would be the scope of us doing that work is what I'm looking. So it doesn't have to take hours.
Right. So I'm just looking at you, John, now, and Jeff, and saying, so you've heard various things here, and I think you heard enough interest in at least giving people the information on the Portland model, and I guess, I don't know if you got enough information for anything else, so just tell me.
What I think we can do is, we'll send a link to everybody in the Portland model. It might be helpful if people take a look at that. That may actually help with some of the further discussion. And then we can spend a couple of minutes trying to sort of ferret through if there's a process or a path towards something, which is different than doing all the work at the moment. And then we can share that and see if there's interest in sort of pursuing a particular process for that.
And the only thing I would add to that is if, if there are particular things that people find out that they want to pursue, then that kind of moves you into the, send out the poll and see what the interest is. So we, so we are careful to sort of measure how we use our staff time. Betty?
Well, I think there's no amount of time that would be too much to prevent injustices to happening to citizens, even if it's only one or two citizens. And I think the two-hour time, a two-hour time limit, I remember when we started that, and I didn't think it was a good idea then. I think that we spend time on things that aren't as important sometimes. Thank you.
You have everything you need? Thank you for your, before we finish our business today, Pat wanted to remind people about the Egan Centers tonight.
Tonight, the Egan Centers do open for the first time all year, and just, I'll send a picture, this is a picture of Tom Egan, who the centers were named after. He was a National Guard officer when I was serving in the National Guard.
And I think the reminder is that even though the weather's supposed to be mild today, there's supposed to make a big downward trend coming that'll be very cold, so that's what we're getting ready for it. All right. Thanks, everybody.